It is March 1st, 2010, and I would like to call this meeting in the Norfolk City Council to order. We're in an open meeting. For anybody that wants to do a little reading, post it in the corner back there is the actual Open Meeting Act. I would ask if you will please stand with us, join with us in a moment of silence in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'll continue with the poll. Coy?
Here.
Langy?
Here.
Van Dyke? Reader? Wilson?
Here.
Brenneman?
Here.
House?
Here.
Saunders?
Here.
All right, and I would ask for a recommendation for approval of the consent agenda included in your packet.
I'll move for approval.
Second.
It's been moved in second, and we approve the consent agenda as provided us. If you will please vote.
All council persons voting in the affirmative.
Also included was a full agenda for approval, please.
All right, move approval over the regular agenda.
Second.
Moving second and for approval of the agenda, full agenda before us again, if you will please vote.
All council persons voting in the affirmative.
And this evening, under special presentations, this is quite an honor for us here in the city of Norfolk, we have with us tonight, Jaden Moore. And the proclamation tonight is, "Jaden Moore, Prudential Spirit of Community Recognition Day." Whereas government is effective in serving the needs of its citizens, but the soul of a city and its vitality as a place to live and work depends on the relationship of families, friends, neighbors. And whereas strengthening those bonds is not as much in the hands of institutions or governments as it is in the hearts of the people, individuals who volunteer to help people of all ages, races, and religion cope with illnesses, overcome hardships and barriers, adjust to social changes, and fulfill their potential, these volunteers are unrecognized, unsung heroes of the society. And whereas Jaden Moore, recently named as one of our state's top honorees in the Prudential Spirit of Community Awards Program, exemplifies the value of volunteer community service and is a role model to other youth as well as to all adults in this community. And whereas a surprising number of volunteers in communities across the nation are like Jaden Moore, a student contributing time without expectation of reward, other than a gratification that comes from helping others, some of these young people work in established groups, others seek new and unique ways to help others on their own. And whereas recognizing these young volunteers and encouraging others to follow their example is the aim of this nationwide program conducted by Prudential Financial and the National Association of Secondary School Principals. And whereas the nationwide program also aims to reach into every community in all 50 states and the District of Columbia to identify and to honor these unsung heroes locally, state by state, and then nationally, in the hopes that their recognition will serve to stimulate others to volunteer service. Now therefore, I sue Fuickman Mayor, the city of Norfolk, by the power vested in me, do hereby proclaim March 1st, 2010, as Jaden Moore, Prudential Spirit of Community Recognition Day, and commend Jaden's outstanding volunteer contribution to others and to the city of Norfolk, Nebraska. Jaden, congratulations from all of us. Come on forward, and I will certainly hand this proclamation to you. And I'm going to ask you if you're comfortable in telling the group a little bit about what it is that you've accomplished and how you've gone about it.
Sure.
All right.
(applause). I started my project two years ago, and I started when my 4-H Extension Office asked all the 4-H families to complete a pillowcase for the children in the hospital. And then I was asked to present all the pillowcases to the children, and it really touched me to see how much that that really meant to them, and to see like their smiles on their faces, and it's just a little thing for us, but it mean, it really meant a lot. And then I realized that they'd run out, and other kids wouldn't be able to experience the same happiness that they received with their pillowcase. So then I wanted to keep it going. And now I get fabric donations from people in this area, and then I complete my pillowcases. And I've had help from our 4-H club, and a couple other people have donated fabric. I've also made pillowcases for me. So it has been a great joy to have, to be able to take them to everybody and make kids happy. And the hospitals have been very receptive to this, too. They've made labels for me and put them on the pillowcases to tell the kids who made the pillowcases for them. And I name my project Sleeping Buddies, so then they put that right on the label for me. And it was great to see even how much it affected the staff members and everybody at the hospital. So it's just been a great joy for me to be able to take part in this project.
Congratulations again, Jaden. What do you need from us?
More donations.
More donations.[343.53][343.53](laughter). I would better miss if we wouldn't given you the opportunity to say so. So how do we get them to you?
You can call me, and my phone number is 371-3761. And I can get in touch with you, and you can take them to my house, or I can come pick them up anywhere. And I need about a yard of either cotton or flannel fabric.
To make it happen. Yep. Great. Appreciate you being here tonight. Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Quite a nod. You're very welcome. Very deserving.
Thank you. (applause).
And while on this high note, too, if I could, I'd like to, this isn't on the agenda, but this has been a gift that has been presented to us here at the city of Norfolk by some of our local teammates of New Core Steel friends. The teammates of New Core Steel, Nebraska, would like to present you with a check for $2,843.33 to use for Parks Division, and specifically to Tahazooka Park. This donation has been provided as a result of New Core Steel, Nebraska's recycling efforts at work and from home. Your organization was chosen by our teammates as a cause that they would like to support. We hope that this donation will help to further your efforts in the community. Sincerely, the teammates of New Core Steel, Nebraska. So our thanks to New Core. They asked this to be read tonight. I don't know that we have any of the teammates here with us tonight, but from all of us, sincere thanks. Then we will move on to the presentation of the Norfolk Housing Market Study Summary by Northeast Nebraska Economic Development District. Tina is coming in. Okay. Yeah, not Tina, Anne. I'm sorry. Anne.
I'm Anne T.G. Pantola from the Economic Development District. And we just completed the housing study for Norfolk about two weeks ago. The city received a grant from NIFA to pay for half of the funds for the study. And you did get a copy of the executive summary, and I think Beth passed out a couple copies of the full study. Some of the highlights from it included, the city of Norfolk is expected to decrease in population by 2020, from 23,005,16 to 22,017, a loss of 1,499 persons. Madison County is also expected to decrease by 2,003 persons. In Madison County as a whole, the labor force has seen a decline. From 2005 to 2008, there was a decrease of 1,139 persons. From 2008 to November of 2009, there was another drop of 685 persons. Norfolk has a very comparable median housing value compared to Fremont and Columbus, which would be the closest sized towns in the area. Fremont is slightly higher, and they're slightly bigger. Columbus is slightly larger, and theirs is slightly lower. Overall, Norfolk has a vacancy rate of 7.53 percent, and communities are encouraged to have vacancy rates of 5 to 7 percent, so you're not too far out of target range. And overall, what we did was, we drove around and assessed every house in town and gave it a rating of dilapidated, poor, fair, good, or excellent. Came up with a rating scale for those. I won't go through how we rated each house in town, but overall, we had 122 dilapidated, 875 poor, 4,010 fair, 2,198 good, 305 excellent, for a total of 7,510 units that we counted. If you go in and count what you would need for future housing stock, if you include the poor and dilapidated, it shows Norfolk having a negative 0.75 vacancy rate, which in the past, all we did was include dilapidated houses, which shows the 7.53 vacancy rate. But if you have to draw people into the community, they're not going to want to do $20,000 to $25,000 worth of rehab just to make a house suitable to live in. So we've also started including the poor in that number. So that does show a negative vacancy rate if you do that instance. Overall, the study shows that Norfolk does need to slow down in building new houses. There wasn't a huge need considering the drop in population. What it does recommend is to continue with the rehab, to fix up what you do have existing. There is a bit of a gap in the $80,000 to $120,000 range, but if you fix up the houses in the $50,000 to $60,000 range, it will bump them up slightly and fill in some of that gap. The whole study, the one that's in front of you, does have what we marked every house in town has, if you want to go through and look at that. Otherwise, the Appendix B in there recommends where we saw suitable for future housing development in town. Do you have any questions?
Counsel, any questions at all?
And if anybody has any, you can sure email them to me, too.
Is the study available online or not?
I will get it to Beth, and if you guys want to put it up online, we can. I'll get you a PDF copy of it.
The decrease in population, what's it due to? Is it young adults leaving the area, or what?
That can be part of it. Even slightly older people leaving to go find new jobs in other towns since Madison...
You don't have a percentage of how that's broken up, then?
By age group.
Well, yeah.
Actually, the age groups, the, let me pull that out quick. The 5 to 18 and the 25 to 44 were the categories that still make up the largest percentage of Norfolk's population.
Say that again, 5 to 18?
5 to 18 and 25 to 44.
Okay.
So, the largest gain occurred in the 45 to 59, but the 5 to 18 and the 25 to 44 still make up the biggest percentage overall. So Norfolk doesn't have an aging population, but it could even be so far as older people are moving to where their kids move to, to be closer to them in their retirement years or anything like that.
Interesting.
Is it detailed enough to have an idea what the median age would be in Norfolk?
Yeah. It is? Um...
Well, I didn't mean to put you on the spot.
No, that's all right.
I can look myself.
It is in there, though.
Is that an educated guess?
Yeah.[814.11][814.11](laughter).
Want to hear from Counsel Manpous, the educated guess?
Hold on, you Dave.[820.11][820.11](laughter).
Oh, I'm not seeing it right now, but it is in here.
That's fine.
Okay.
Any other questions that anyone might have?
Over what timeframe was this conducted that we lost this population?
It started with the 2000 census, and then it was just projections beyond that.
So that would include the individuals that left from the closing of the D-line?
Yep, that factored into it, too, yep.
Thank you.
And even if you do pull up the census online, there is 2006 through 2008 projections on there, and it showed a fairly significant decrease in Norfolk's population already for the projections by the census, so.
Okay. Appreciate you being here tonight.
Thank you.
Thanks for the, thanks for the information and the work done on it. All right, we're going to move to public hearings. Public hearing tonight to consider establishing an economic development program by appropriating annually from local sources of revenue, $400,000 for 10 years. I will open this public hearing, and I believe, sir, I'm going to look to you.
Me?
Yeah, you are you, to give us a little bit of information on this.
Well, the hearing is required by the statute to allow the opportunity for the plan to be presented and for there to be comment and discussion. After you've had the, after you've had the public hearing, the next item on the agenda is the resolution for your consideration, and that resolution has attached to it the plan. And the approval of that resolution would have the effect of putting the, of putting the issue on the primary ballot in May. So I don't know.
Ainge?
Looks like Al wants to say something.
Well, I would just comment that the basis of the economic development plan is to establish an LB-840 program which allows us to use sales tax and/or property tax to fund an economic development incentive program. Those incentives can be for job creation, public infrastructure, job training, business incentives, whether they be loans or other types of incentives that we would put together. But the purpose of this program is to incentivize business in one manner or another. And what you need to do tonight is determine whether or not we want to place this on the ballot for a May election, as Mr. Shukai said.
So the taxpayers are the quote, "local sources of revenue"?
Yes, whether it be sales tax or property tax. In the case of Norfolk, because our sales tax is maximized, it is a property tax.
Okay, this is a public hearing, so if there's any audience, anyone that wants to come forward and speak, we'll ask you to state your name for us, if you will. Sign in.
Hi, I'm Dave Hedrick, and I just had a quick question on the LB-840. In the past, you guys have put in the paper that your number one priority has been recreation, in that the economic development was further down on the list. And I don't want to come up here and act like I'm for or against this, I'm just raising a question on this, as far as what, why this was bumped up, or why this is moving forward up to the May election with the thought of knowing that the recreational things that we're looking at in the future are going to be, it's getting bumped ahead of that anyway, so.
Fair question. All the sudden. I think we have had a lot of discussion about all the priorities for the city, and certainly heard many different voices expressed. I think at this point, while our number one priority remains to be the recreational facilities here, because we are not in place yet with a plan that has been surrounded by the support of certainly all the citizens here of Norfolk, and we continue our work, we knew we were not going to be quite ready to put this on a ballot even yet this summer. So through a lot of efforts by many others within the city, LB-840 has come to this body with the request by their efforts to be put on the ballot, and that's truly what it is that we are discussing tonight. It is not that the decision is to be made by this body other than to allow the citizens of Norfolk to speak for or against. So, counsel, if there's anything anybody wants to add to that, or staff?
I think it's important also to look at the fact that, as we've been having some of these meetings about the recreation plan, a lot of the opposition to it would be the fact that people are looking for more jobs, and you know, we need to be moving in the direction of getting businesses to Norfolk and providing better paying jobs and whatnot. And this is a first step into allowing us to maybe help move in that direction. So we're trying to also solve that problem as well.
Sure.
And as well sustain those that are here. I think that's an important piece of it, too.
Yeah.
LB-840 would allow that to happen. You know, there's a lot of businesses that have been here a long time and are committed to remaining here and growing here. We need to be able to support them, too, in their efforts, so.
Oh, definitely, yes.
Anyone else with...
Well, I guess I would add that, you know, at this point in time, our hands are relatively tied on how we can spend our revenues, our property taxes, and sales taxes. With the inception of a LB-840, that'll allow us to do some of those things. And as has already been pointed out, in order for us to attract industry or other entities into this community, they look strongly at the amenities that exist.
Sure.
And this is why we've kind of considered recreation as our number one project. However, we have other projects out there also that need to have, be addressed, one of which is economic development. And the passage of an 840 would give us the opportunity to use and spend some of our funds to develop further businesses. And of course, if you gather business, then you gather people, and if you gather people, you gather sales tax, and consequently, we'll have a tendency to equal itself out.
Sure. And from what I understand, with talking to a few councilmen that I've been able to talk to, it gives us a chance to level the playing field with some of the communities around, like Fremont and Columbus and whatnot. Is that correct?
Correct. There's a lot of communities that already have an LB-840 in place.
Sure.
And so...
And who brought this forward, or who's behind bringing that?
I'm going to let you answer that.
Well, I would suggest to you that this has been a community outreach. I know that most recently, the Chamber with the Action Council has picked up the torch and brought it forward. The city council has had this on their agenda for a number of years. As you know, the LB-840 was in front of the community as a sales tax referendum eight years ago. And, you know, at that point, it did not pass in 2002, but you know, this is not a topic that's new to our community, and it is something that has been recognized as a necessity for some time, as the recreation piece has as well. So, you know, at this point, I would say that it really is a community need, and it's been brought forward by, you know, not only the business community, but it's been in the minds of the, of the city council as well, understanding what it is that we need to do.
Sure.
That's all I have.
Okay. Thank you for being here.
That might be the one thing to clarify is that without LB-840, by statute, we're not allowed to use tax dollars for these improvements.
That's correct.
It gives us the ability to, just like you said, to level the playing field. I mean, there is no magic wand in economic development, but this will level the playing field. We'll still have to continue to work as hard as we have in the past.
Sure. Okay. Thanks, guys.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else that wants to come forward and speak?
I might be able to help answer your question. I'm one of the guys. I'd like to just read a brief statement on behalf of the Norfolk Area Chamber of Commerce, if I could. I'm going to be happy to answer any questions you may have. Mayor Sue and members of the Norfolk City Council, on behalf of the many members of the Norfolk Area Chamber of Commerce throughout the region, I would like to lend our enthusiastic support to LB-840 and encourage you to place it on the May 11th ballot. This will give the people of Norfolk an opportunity to vote for the creation of a tremendous tool that will help us with the attraction of new jobs and the retention of current jobs. No issue is more important to the Norfolkian people right now than renewing our region's economic prosperity. We must have a laser focus on creating the jobs Norfolkans want and need. The Action Council of the Norfolk Area Chamber of Commerce was established over 50 years ago as the economic development arm of the chamber in the Norfolk community. The purpose: to attract new industry, help grow existing industry, create new jobs, and retain existing jobs in the Norfolk area. And this is still our mission today. This group is made up of industry leaders, economic developers, business leaders, and representatives from both city and county government. In our February 19th meeting, the Action Council voted unanimously and supported placing LB-840 on the May 11th, 2010 ballot. We did so because the time is right for us to move our community forward. Norfolk stands at a defining moment where the decisions made today will influence the economic prosperity, regional and global competitiveness, as well as new job opportunities for future generations of Norfolkans. Creating new jobs and retaining existing jobs will help us diversify the local tax base, which will, over time, actually help to keep our taxes more competitive. The continued lack of LB-840 utilization in Norfolk would keep us at a disadvantage to most other Nebraska communities that are competing for the same new industries and jobs. We routinely lose new industry and new job prospects to other Nebraska communities who have long established LB-840 war chests to use for economic development improvements, infrastructure, and incentives. The continued lack of LB-840 would not only damage prospects for new job creation, but also jeopardize existing jobs that are always being courted by other progressive communities. 2010 is the year we have an opportunity to address this challenge and welcome new business expansion and attraction to Norfolk. The Norfolk Area Chamber of Commerce, its 600 members and their 15,000 employees, want to work closely with Mayor Fuickman, the city council, and the citizens of Norfolk as one team to make LB-840 a reality for our community. The chamber sees our role as one of educators in this process. We want to provide an environment that will allow the citizens of Norfolk to make an educated and informed decision when they go into the voters booth on May 11th. NorfolkAreaVotes.com, the chamber's new Legislative Action Center website, will be used as one of those educational tools for the citizens of Norfolk to gather more information on LB-840 and how it will benefit our community for years to come. NorfolkAreaVotes.com will also serve as a community-wide source of legislative information for state and federal issues that affect Norfolk as well. In addition to the successful implementation of LB-840, job creation, and retention economic development legislation, an updated recreation plan is also a very important economic development tool for us to use in Norfolk. The business community supports a fiscally sound recreation plan for the Norfolk community, and we want to work together with you as one team to help make this a strong part of a complete economic development package. The Norfolk Area Chamber of Commerce stands ready to help. We are asking citizens and their leaders to embrace the free enterprise principles that created the world's greatest economy and can lead us back to prosperity. America's workers, entrepreneurs, and companies are the best in the world. They can outwork, outthink, and outproduce anyone if they have the freedom to pursue their dreams and if government policies encourage and reward their success. LB-840 would do just that in the Norfolk area. Creating new jobs is not enough. We must have adequately trained workers to fill those new jobs of the 21st century. The chamber is dedicated to partnering with Northeast Community College to continually reform our training programs so that we can prepare those workers for the jobs that are going to exist in the future. We approach this economic development challenge with our sleeves rolled up, not our hands held out. We are not asking what our local government can do for us. We are suggesting what the local Norfolk business community can and must do to meet its responsibilities to the Norfolkian people, and that is to create good jobs and responsibly grow our economy. On behalf of the Norfolk Area Chamber of Commerce, our 600 members and their 15,000 employees, we thank you for your service to the community. We commend you for your leadership, and we look forward to continuing our work with you as partners in creating Norfolk's future. Thank you.
Mr. Houston, thank you. Any questions for Dennis? Okay.
Thanks.
Anyone else that wants to come forward? And again, I would ask you to state your name for us and sign in.
I'm going to sign in first.
Whatever's best for you. Whatever's best for you.
I do have a question for you. As an individual.
Tell me your name.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's all right.
My name is Curtis Mass.
Curtis?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. As an individual, how is it possible that I myself can encourage businesses to come to Norfolk, for example, emailing them or, I don't know, getting in, in contact with them any way possible? Do you think I should rephrase that, or?
Help me out. You're, you're offering to email? Is that what you're telling me?
Yes, I am, because I actually, I told myself, no matter what town I settled down in, my lifelong goal was to help bring jobs there.
Great.
So, that's what I want to do. Any way I can help out, I'd be more than willing to give you my number, my email address. I really want to help out. I do plan on going into college in probably about three years. My career goal, I guess you could say, is to be an economic developer, but for now, you know, I just work at Walmart right now, so life happens, you know. But if there's any way I can help out, I mean, for, right now, is there anything I can do?
I believe there's two gentlemen right there in the front row that are going to take advantage of you being a willing volunteer. Correct me if I'm wrong.
These two guys right here?
Those two gentlemen right there.
Okay. Another comment, a, a comment I wanted to say, too. I understand that in the future plan of 2030, they wanted, they wanted to build a sort of a bypass or loop around the east side of the city. I do believe that half of the work is already in place. You know, you have Victory Road, Eisenhower Avenue. You might have to build a curve that connects Victory Road and Eisenhower Avenue there, and two lanes probably would do it. Just wanted to throw that out there, too, seeing how you're, we're talking about LB-840, or, yeah, LB-840, and, one thing you got to look at whenever it comes to economics is your roadways. How do you get to your job? You know? I thought I'd just give you that, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate your being here tonight, Curtis.
One of the projects that's underway is the completion of the Northeast Industrial Highway, which will connect Highway 35 and US 81 together between about a half-mile south of New Core Steel and just north of the ethanol plant and Norfolk Iron and Metal. So we're trying to get some improved roads that will bring traffic directly into that core industrial area in that part of town. So, we do have, have one leg of that, that piece of beginning, I should guess.
Anyone else this evening?
Hello, my name is Gene Reed, and I basically just have one question. With the passage of the LB-840, would the MPPD rebate money possibly be allocated to be used in that aspect? I realize it's a lot now, I believe, to the college, to the nursing, UNMC nursing building for several years, but I was just wondering in the future if that would be money that could be allocated to LB-840.
Under the current statute, no, it is not eligible to be used. We can use property tax and sales tax, as I understand it, not the, the franchise fee, if you will, from MPPD. In addition, the money that is not going to the nursing college, not all of that money is going to the nursing college, a pretty healthy portion of that is going to property tax relief. That's what's holding the property taxes at their current level, but it's used, it's being used to keep the property taxes down. And that was put into place by the council some time ago when the Power of Partnership program was to end, which it, which it has now ended, and we are putting a portion of the MPPD money into the nursing college. But the rest of it is going into property tax relief.
Okay. And I just, you know, hope the council takes into consideration that, as a taxpayer here in Norfolk, what would be the higher priority would be the, you know, whether it be the LB-840 or, you know, for the recreation, we're still talking about a pretty good, healthy amount of cash coming in, and that would be directly affecting the, I guess, the community here individually for taxpayers, so we don't tax ourselves out of people wanting to move to Norfolk.
Appreciate your comments.
Thank you.
Anyone else this evening? As this is a public hearing?
Hello, my name is Rick Pipeling. Ladies and gentlemen.
Welcome, Rick.
Decades ago, people not like you, well, not your faces, but other people also pushed for that meatpacking plant, and after 25 years, it's closed, and after three owners, and there was a great deal of tax rebates for that, the sewer system, and on and on and on. I've heard rumor that that, the sewer lines in that building are concreted up. Is that perhaps true?
I can't answer that. I have no idea.
Well, that's something that I believe people would do.
No, it is not true.
We don't believe, we believe that the sewer is still functioning at that facility.
Okay. That guy's name is? Sir? Your name is? You believe that?
I'm the one, I'm the one that made the comment over here.
All right, your name?
I'm the public works director, Dennis Smith.
All right, good. What is our unemployment rate at the current time?
I think we can still comfortably say 5% less.
Four, five.
Yep.
Three, seven, nine.
Pardon me?
Nine or seven, three point nine.
I can tell you it's under 5%. I can't tell you exactly what it is, but.
Okay, that's fine. That's remarkable. I think that's pretty good unemployment.
I agree.
So, the meatpacking plant went down after 25 years. We built two swimming pools that you guys want to replace after 35 years. I wondered what longevity you guys had in mind.
What longevity we have in mind?
Is it, are, are the places that you, you want to open up going to be closed in 10 years?
Boy.
That's a good question.
You bet it is. And I tell you what.
And no one knows, and no one knows, that's, that's the truth.
You're absolutely right, and I.
Economics and all this stuff happens.
Sure. And we have a great economic developer that is working with us, partnering with us to, we, we want to be able to put ourselves in place to have opportunity at those lookers.
And we're sitting at 4% unemployment rate, which is bad.
You bet. Thank you. Anyone else this evening? Okay. Then I will close this hearing and look for motion for consideration of Resolution Number 2010-6.
Your honor, I'd like to introduce Resolution 2010-6.
Second.
We have a motion in the second. Any further discussion, council?
I guess I would just, just like to reiterate what, what Dennis said. You know, economic development's like a wheel, and this is just one spoke in that wheel. We have to continue to do what we have been doing, but this is going to level the playing field, and I think it's a very important tool to keep Norfolk prosperous, so let's get it on the ballot and.
Okay. Any other comments?
I'd say it's our goal to keep moving forward, and unless we have an LB-840, we will not move forward. We'll become stagnant.
Let me guess, finally, the other thing that needs to be said, and I encourage all the citizens out there, is become informed about this plan and, and the potential that it has and that, and there will be plenty of opportunities, as Mr. Houston noted, that there'll be a website and that, to become further informed, and when you have the opportunity in May to vote, be an informed voter, don't, don't just be an emotional voter.
Well said.
And I agree, and I think that's one of the keys. We're going to let the citizens vote for this, they're going to decide the fate of this, and, and there is going to be a lot of tools out there to learn about this, so I think they need to take advantage of those and, and really look both ways at what's coming.
Agreed. And certainly, I believe I can speak for the chamber to say, if you do have questions, citizens, stop in there, see them. I know there's information that they can sure provide you with, so. Alan?
I would just bring your attention back to the report that we just heard this evening that suggests that there are 1,500 fewer people in Norfolk than there were in, in 2000. I mean, we're projected to, to be down 1,500 people. Now, our unemployment rate might be lower than the national average, which is not a bad thing, but, you know, we need to create those jobs so that people are not moving out of Norfolk as well.
Okay. Are we ready to vote? Please do so.
All council persons. All council persons voting in affirmative, Resolution 2010-6 is adopted.
Okay. Seeing nothing else on the agenda, I would ask for a.
Madam Mayor?
Sir?
If you would indulge me for just a moment, I wanted to update the council very briefly on our recreation plan.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
We've had some discussions since our town hall meeting. Our marching orders from that point were to revisit the plan, look for modifications to the scope of the plan, try and right-size it, if you will. We have, through staff, we have gone back to DLR and Burbuck, they're working on that. They did bring us a plan last week that we took a look at, was not acceptable. It didn't, it did not meet the criteria that we understood to, to come out of that, so we anticipate by the middle of March, toward the end of March, to have some more information for you. But at this point, we are continuing to move forward, we just don't have any, any revised plans for you at this time.
Thanks, Sal. Okay, now I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make the motion, your honor. Second.
We are adjourned. Thank you, everyone.